Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this regular meeting of the Wayne Westland Board of Education. The date is July 29th. We certainly appreciate you all being here and we appreciate your support of our school district. This evening, we're going to begin the Pledge of Allegiance and we're going to be led tonight in the Pledge of Allegiance by Dr. Sue Carnell.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a rooty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dr. Carnell. Roll call, Mr. Neal.
Ms. Hines.
Present.
Myself, here. Mr. Buckaloo.
Here.
Mrs. Meddell.
I'm here.
Mrs. Walker.
Present.
Dr. Weaver.
Present.
And President Cox.
Present.
All seven present.
Thank you, Mr. Neal. First item on our agenda, following roll call, 353.19 is recognitions and presentations. Dr. Carnell.
Thank you, President Cox. Good evening, everyone. At this time, I'd like to invite Bill Chatfield, Mr. Bill Chatfield, to the podium. Mr. Chatfield is the president-elect of the Michigan School Business Official and is here this evening to present an award to the Maintenance, Operation, and Technology Department. Mr. Chatfield.
Thank you very much. Good evening. Thank you for giving me the opportunity tonight to present a pretty special recognition. Again, my name's Bill Chatfield. I'm on the MSBO Board of Directors, and it is my pleasure tonight to honor your Operations Department, Mr. Tony Spiezak, Mr. Gino Montane, Mr. Matt Connolly, with the MSBO Meridian Award of Excellence. MSBO is a statewide organization representing more than 2,000 school business officials from across the state who provide leadership in business, transportation, facilities, food service, human resources, and technology areas. The Meridian Award is a special recognition acknowledging successful practices in all areas of school management and operations. Selection is based on the degree to which the concept enhances the effectiveness of a school district and is a program that can be replicated by other districts. An awards committee comprised of MSBO members chooses the winners who receive a Crystal Award, a check, and as importantly, gets spotlighted in a future issue of MSBO E-News and Views, our online monthly publication. So, your operations team developed and implemented the Two Clicks to Safety System, which is an interactive emergency dashboard and calendar that reports fire, tornado, and lockdown drills, along with evacuation and hazmat emergencies, and records those as is required by the state for reporting purposes. With just two mouse clicks, emergency information is available to district staff as well as first responders via email or a website interface that allows all stakeholders to access the same information at the same time, which includes any updates and any changes as a situation may progress. So this is a tremendous safety enhancement for students and staff of Wayne Westland Community Schools, and it's precisely the type of program that the Meridian Award is intended to recognize. So, we're very pleased to recognize these gentlemen for that. On a little more personal note, I'm personally proud to recognize Tony, Gino, and Matt tonight. My role on the MSBO Board is a voluntary one, much like your own Board of Education here. My day job is that of Operations Director at the Wald Lake Consolidated School District. So I've had the opportunity of knowing and working with these gentlemen for many years, and Tony, actually, for a lot more than many years. So, and these gentlemen, they continue to develop and implement cutting-edge systems and programs. They've presented at many MSBO conferences. They've helped districts around the state to improve their own operations, and all of us fellow operations folks have benefited from their hard work and their willingness to share that work to make other schools, school districts better. So, I'm personally very glad to see them rewarded for this, and frankly, Wayne Westland is fortunate and can take pride in having these gentlemen overseeing their facilities because they do an excellent job. So it is my pleasure and thanks that I present Tony, Gino, and Matt with the Meridian Crystal Award. Careful. And a $1,000 check from MSBO to go to the Wayne Westland Scholarship Fund. And... Make sure you get that to Mr. Kling before you buy a new lawnmower or something. Thank you very much for the opportunity tonight.
Thank you, Bill. You certainly appreciate the hard work that you do. It shows in our buildings, and it's nice to hear that recognition coming from out of the district. So, congratulations, gentlemen. Next item on the agenda is citizens' comments. This is the portion of the agenda reserved for people who would like to make statements or talk to the board about issues that are on the agenda. So if anybody would like to address the board about an issue on the agenda this evening, we have a blue form. We'd like you to fill it out. I'm going to say just a little bit about the blue form. You've heard about the blue form before, and we've had several meetings in a row where there was many, many people that would like to address the board, and those people filled out forms, and I'll be just perfectly frank, there's no way I could read who it was. I could not read the name, and I could not read the reason that they wanted to talk with the board. So, we talked about that, and perhaps there's a better way to accomplish this, maybe with a computer in the room where people, when they want to address the board, they could come in and type their name into the computer, and we would have then a record of who it was that addressed the board, and we would have the reason that they wanted. It would help us to follow up with them, and it would certainly eliminate, you know, how do you write on a piece of paper? You don't have a desk, and you're borrowing a pen from someone, and you're scribbling it fast. So, we run into some troubles with that. So, we're going to try to do better with that so that there's a more, you know, systematic way to put your name down so that we can have a record of it. Is there anybody this evening that would like to address the board on an agenda item? Okay. Thank you. Seeing none, we will move on to the consent agenda, 355.19.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Walker. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Mr. Buckaloo. Is discussion? Roll call, vote, please.
Mr. Neal, yes. Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Mrs. Meddell?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Hines?
Yes.
And President Cox?
Yes.
Seven yea.
Thank you, Mr. Neal. 356.19 is the Board of Education Committee report. Our first committee report is the Policy Committee summary from Mrs. Meddell.
Just had it here.
Is...
The minutes for the Policy Committee meeting were held on June 17th, 2019. Committee members present were myself and Dr. Weaver. Mrs. Hines joined us right at the end of the meeting, having a previous commitment. Staff members present were Dr. Shelley Holt and Tamara Phoenix, as a note taker. The meeting was called to order, and we, first thing on our discussion was Board Book usage, which will begin July 1st, 2019. The committee reviewed the remainder of the Board operating procedures and suggested changes. There are no additional comments from the committee members or the superintendent. The meeting was adjourned at 6:28 PM. The suggested revisions from, excuse me, for the Board operating procedures include in the, are included in the Board Book here and can be found on page 45 of the Agenda Book.
Thank you, Mrs. Meddell. Is there a motion?
You don't, you don't, you don't need a motion on a report.
Well, the item is listed as 356.19, Policy Committee, and at the end of it is a recommended motion to approve the changes.
Right. I just, I just did, I just did the minutes of the committee meeting.
Okay, so is, is there a motion on the proposed changes?
I'll move that we support the changes to the Board operating procedures as recommended by the committee.
Moved by Meddell. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Mrs. Walker? Is there discussion?
A question.
Mr. Neal?
When the committee reviewed these changes, I noticed it in the evaluation of the superintendent, 6.1F, 6.1. The change in that section says revised, excuse me, it says the evaluation will be completed per revised school code 380.385.
Correct.
I, I may not be interpreting it correctly, so with that in mind, when I looked at that section of the state law, that section refers to the initial superintendent appointed after the initial board was formed. It's in the very beginning, when a district is first formed, and then you pick your very first superintendent, that section has a title that says the initial superintendent. I think there's language elsewhere.
And I think you may be correct on that one. So we need to go back and look at the number as it appears in the revised school code.
So can you change your motion and pull that one out and table that one?
I have no problems pulling it out.
Okay, the motion's been amended. Is the support amended?
Yes, I'll support.
The motion and support is amended. F6.1 is not part of the, of the motion. Is there further discussion? Well, hearing no further discussion, I would like to bring something up. We have several items on the Policy Committee that has to do with, with the superintendent, and also has to do with taking the trustees on a tour. Now, this is something, for those of you that don't know, this is something that Mrs. Meddell has done for years out of the goodness of her heart. When I first came onto the board, she took me around. It was an all-day trip. We went to each building.
Took you for a ride.
She took me for a ride, and frankly, exposed me to things that I never would have had the opportunity to see, people I would not have met had it not been for that, because the work is done here, not in, not in the individual buildings. I'm not, I don't know that we want to make it the policy, is all I'm saying. I, I don't have a problem with it, but how thick is this book going to get? In addition to that, there was two people in, on the Policy Committee that were there. There was not three. I don't know, maybe we should just postpone the whole thing and look at that, rather than pull that out, look at 380.385 and firm that up and then return it.
So can I just ask, Mrs. Meddell, was there a reason why that one?
I was just going to speak to them. Taking a look at number one there, where it says the Board Policy or Designee, when I came on board, it was the superintendent who took a half a day to take trustees around to the different buildings where he could show us the facilities, because as trustees, we are charged, one of our duties is facilities management. So, this was just moved from the responsibility of the superintendent to the Board President or Designee to actually reflect what has occurred since that superintendent left office.
Yeah, I think it...
So if there's only two disagreements, why don't we pull that one and the other one and table those so there's more discussion and just vote on the rest of the policies?
Would you amend the motion?
That's, that's fine.
And the support? So, the facilities tour, Section C, is now removed along with Section F6.1? Is there discussion on the other elements of the Policy?
I have a question. You've just removed C1. Is that going to come back to us on a different form later?
Perhaps. I, frankly, I like the idea of the superintendent doing it with a new trustee. Gives a new trustee and a superintendent an opportunity to spend some time together, maybe get to know one another, you know? As the Board, as the Board President or my Designee, you know, I don't, as a regular policy, go into the buildings. I think that causes a disruption.
It depends on how you do it. By the way, I think that the tour is an excellent idea. Too many times, even employees in one element of education, I'm speaking about myself, I never got into the elementary buildings, and that tour was important.
Yes, yes.
Even as an employee, I valued it. Former employee.
And I'd like to say one thing as well. I did a tour this year. I try to do one every year, but it's important if we're closing facilities to actually go talk, see what we're, even with the bond, like we had Boilers 25-years-old. So if we're spending money, I need to know what we're looking at, and even like the way you have it set up, it was organized, so they knew what time were coming, it wasn't a disruption. But even the teachers, they say a lot of times that they can't get to the board. So it is important as a board member to make sure that you put your hand out to the staff members and say that you are available, and they thought it was very important when I did go out, because they said nobody come to the building. So I think that's something that we should do to help our staff, and it helps the motivation as well.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
My understanding is that we're not getting rid of the tour. The reason that it's coming off the agenda right now is so the Policy Committee can decide who's going to be the lead of the tour, not that we're not going to do the tour.
That's exactly right.
Who's going to lead the tour is the question, not, we're still going to do the tour.
Yes, but the issue now on the table is, that is going to be removed? The maker of the motion removed it?
And the supporter removed it.
So it's not even on this issue anymore? Further discussion? Roll call, vote?
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Mrs. Meddell?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Hines?
Yes.
Myself, yes. President Cox?
Yes.
Seven yea.
Thank you. Finance Committee report, Mr. Buckaloo.
Yes, thank you. Finance Committee met Tuesday, July 16th, beginning at 10 o'clock. Members present were myself, Dr. Sue Carnell, Mr. Devon Kling, Mr. Mark Neal, Ms. Yvonne Scott, note taker, Ms. Jill Simmons, Mr. Tony Spiezak, Ms. Shawna Walker. After welcoming Dr. Carnell to our meeting, the meeting was turned over to Mr. Kling, and at that time, he talked about an electrical transformer at Wayne Memorial High School that needed to be replaced as soon as possible. Mr. Spiezak added that there were three quotes offered, received rather, and the lowest bidder was Hop Electric Incorporated. The total for the transformer will be $28,250, but could possibly go as high as $44,765 if the existing cables failed a merger test. There's hope that we can have this done on a Saturday in August. It should take six to eight hours to complete and be ready for the opening of school in September. Mr. Kling also stated that the bond money is now on our accounts, and when we start receiving invoices for expenses incurred, money will be moved from that higher interest-bearing account to a lower interest-bearing account for payment. Also pointed out, Mr. Kling also pointed out that the general fund looks low at this point. The reason for that is that we're meeting payroll on an ongoing basis, but state aid payments come over a 10-month period instead of a 12-month period, and so we're drawing down on some of our fund equity at this point. Mr. Kling also discussed that all internal accounts are in the process of being changed to meet the needs of GASP 84, a new accounting process. Per Plan Moran, we have one year to do this, but our goal is to have this done before the year is out. By the way, moving one of these accounts is a simple matter. It's no big deal. The problem is that there are so many accounts that need to be moved, and you need to take some time and give some thought to each one of those movements. So we're going to need that time to get that accomplished. The next Finance Committee meeting is scheduled for August 15th at 10:00 AM, and we adjourned our meeting on the 16th at 10:35 AM.
Thank you, Mr. Buckaloo. Is there any discussion? No action is required from the board on that presentation. We move to 357.19, Review and Approval of Business Service and Finance Items. Ms. Simmons?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm requesting Board approval this evening for a lease to purchase of two RICO color printers, one RICO black and white, one RICO stack cutter, one RICO binder, one RICO coil inserter. All necessary software needed for the online ordering will be included, as well as training and consulting between RICO and Wayne Westland Communications employees. These items will be utilized by the Communications Department to implement an in-district print shop that will service all of the paper-based printing needs of the district. In addition to supporting all of the schools and department needs, the print shop will also provide internship opportunities for students attending the William D. Ford Career Technical Center. It is estimated that implementing an in-district print shop will save the district approximately $100,000 per year in printing cost. The cost of this lease-to-purchase program over a five-year timeframe totals $341,228.40 plus interest. Prices are achieved within the MyDeal Collaborative Purchasing Consortium, and if approved, this will be charged to the general fund.
Thank you, Ms. Simmons. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Hines. Support? Support by Mr. Neal. Discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Weaver?
I am looking at this. Wouldn't it be more cost-effective on our part to purchase it and not lease to own? Because you can get, believe me, I know you can get tied up in the lease to own deals where they want to pay out at the end that you weren't expecting.
So after this lease process, I did speak with Jenny Johnson. She's our Director of Communications, and there will not be an extra price at the end of it. It is the lease to, everything will be fully owned at the end of the five-year period.
But you're also paying interest on the lease.
Yes, and she, she is here to speak to this if she has more information to add, but she did state that this was the cheapest pricing that we were able to obtain during this lease-to-purchase program over the five years.
And what is the cost of the machine itself?
There's a total. There are several different machines that we're offering, and did you get a copy of the original? When we did the board studies session, we gave copies of this, and then in your packet, you should also have the information that has. I also have representatives here from RICO who can speak. Is there a specific machine you're interested in what that cost is, or just all of the machines together?
All the machines together.
So that total is in here. It's going to be over three, or five-year timeframe, $341,228 is what we're paying. But that's, that's not just for the machines, that's for the service and the consulting services as well.
Mr. Weaver, further comments?
No.
Mr. Neal?
If I understand the costing and estimates for savings, that our savings will end up paying for it in more so. We'll at least pay for the lease, and we'll have saved even more money.
Yes, and the plan is to grow this so that we can actually take on outside printing, and we could potentially market that as a revenue source.
We'll have the machines for longer than we're actually paying the lease, so once we pay off the lease, we're still going to have the machines. They'll be fully operational, so then everything we do will be a profit at that point because we're not paying back the lease payment anymore.
Further discussion?
Is the representative here?
Yeah. Did you have a question?
Yes.
Okay, yeah. We have Colin and Lass from RICO who have joined us this evening. They've been working with us for the past few months, getting together what's going to fit best for the district, because in addition to us having the in-district print shop, this is also going to take the wear and tear off of the current print machines that are in the buildings, because staff won't have to use them as much. They can send the stuff to us.
Okay. My question is, over the life of this lease, how much interest will we be paying? And also, I want to know, five years is a long time for technology, so I'm assuming that five years from now, after we paid this off, that we're going to need to buy something else. So what is the life usefulness of this machine?
You can speak to that.
Sure. Well, as far as the life usefulness, it varies for a couple of the items. As far as the stack cutter goes, that is definitely going to have longevity well beyond the five years that you're paying it off. So I would say probably a minimum of 10 years for the stack cutter and the coiling devices. As far as the color printer is going, at your volume, definitely would be able to get five years. I would say probably six to seven years would be my estimate. With that said, you're going to be under a maintenance agreement the whole time, so if anything does pop up after year five, that's where we come in and fix it and replace everything.
And the interest over the life of the lease?
I apologize, I don't have the actual interest number in front of me.
Thank you.
I'm wondering if this went through Devin. You could see, gentlemen, what we're, what we're interested in knowing.
Yeah, definitely.
You know, we buy school buses $100,000 a crack and, and don't pay interest on it, and we'd like to know what the ramifications are. Also, will the expense of this change with our usage?
So, the contract, we use the MyDeal, which is what we've negotiated with the state of Michigan. Most, I would say nearly all of our school systems use the dollar buyout, which is what this program is. So you've got a couple of advantages working for you. Number one is at the end of the lease term, you take ownership. Secondly, this is production-level equipment, so it's, it's very robust, and it is not uncommon to get that seven years, six for sure, seven out of the program. So, the maintenance program that Colin referred to covers, it's actually, it warranties it as new while it's under maintenance.
Is a lease purchase arrangement necessary in order to buy this, or could we just buy it outright?
You could pay for it outright. Most folks conserve the capital, and they do the dollar buyout.
But we don't know what the difference between the two is.
I think we can get it, we can calculate it out.
Yeah, I'll be able to get it real quick. I just don't have it in front of me.
What's, what's real quick? Like by the end of the meeting?
Yeah. Yeah, I can go fire up a hotspot or log onto Wi-Fi, and I can get the number for you.
Okay, I'll tell you what, we'll move this to the end of the agenda.
Fair enough.
And we'll give you an opportunity to take a look at that.
Perfect.
Is the, okay?
Are there questions? Besides that?
Are there further questions about the machine? Certainly, your company has a great, you know, a great name. We're just looking at the pennies.
Definitely.
Okay.
Do you need a motion to move?
Pardon me?
Yes. Because there's a motion. Do you need a motion to move?
I do. I need a motion to move it to the end of the agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Neal. Support?
Support.
Support by Mr. Buckaloo. Move it to the end of the agenda. Discussion on that motion? Roll call, vote?
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Hines?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Mrs. Meddell?
Yes.
And President Cox?
Yes.
Seven in favor.
And the issue now will be, we'll move 357.191 to 360.19A. Is that good, Mrs. Watson?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Simmons?
Thank you, Mr. President. I am requesting Board, post-Board approval to replace the transformer at Wayne Memorial High School. Due to the emergency situation, the work to replace the transformer has been started. In order to have school open on schedule, we were unable to follow the procedure of obtaining competitive bids. The order has been placed for the new transformer. Three quotes were obtained from three independent companies. Hop Electric, Inc. will be completing the work. The amount not to exceed $45,000 will be charged to the sinking fund.
Is there a motion?
Moved to accept.
Moved by Mrs. Walker. Support?
Support.
Support by Dr. Weaver. Is there discussion?
I just have one quick question. How is the electrical system over at Wayne Memorial? Because I know, like, last year or the year before, we had to pay over 100-something thousand for some electrical systems underground. Does it need some type of upgrades, or?
Mr. Spiezak?
The system is old.
Thank you, Mrs. Spiezak.
So the main primary feeds were changed last year, which is a couple hundred thousand dollars. This transformer is actually a step-up transformer. It's located in the bullpen. It only feeds the annex over at Wayne Memorial, so it's not the entire building. But to answer your question, we will be doing a lot of that with the bond renovations.
Thank you, Mr. Spiezak.
Further discussion? Roll call, vote?
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker? Ms. Hines?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Mrs. Meddell?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
And President Cox?
Yes.
Seven in favor.
Thank you, Mr. Neal. 358.19 on the agenda is review and approval of human resource items. Back to you, Ms. Simmons.
Thank you again, Mr. President. I present to you Ms. Lindsay Russo as Director of Employee Relations. If you turn to page 53, you will find Ms. Russo's data sheet. She possesses a Bachelor of Science with a major and minor in English and Business from Central Michigan University, a Master of Science in Teaching and Learning from Nova Southeastern University, and a Master of Education in Educational Leadership from Concordia University. Her career has spent, has been spent here in Wayne Westland, beginning as a seventh-grade ELA teacher at Franklin and Stevenson Middle Schools, as a ninth and 10th grade ELA co-teacher at Wayne Memorial, an assistant principal at Wayne Memorial High School, and then most recently, she was placed as the Principal of Marshall Upper Elementary School.
Thank you, Ms. Simmons. Is there a motion?
Move approval.
Moved by Dr. Weaver, support by Mrs. Walker. Is there discussion? Roll call vote?
Ms. Hines?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Mrs. Meddell?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Absolutely.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
And President Cox?
That's two absolutes. And welcome, Mrs. Russo. We're happy to have you.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the Board of Education. Thank you for this opportunity to help lead the district in this new capacity. As a 15-year educator in Wayne Westland, my entire career in education has been devoted to our kids, families, and our staff. I know I will be an asset in this new role by recruiting and retaining caring, compassionate, and professional members who will continue the legacy in Wayne Westland in providing a high-quality education to ensure success for every student. Thank you.
Thank you. We have every confidence you will do just that. Ms. Simmons?
Thank you, Mr. President. I present to you for review and approval, Ms. Erin Eaton for the Adams and Marshall Upper Elementary School Principal for the 1920s school year, and then this will transition into the Adams Middle School Principal position for the 2021 school year. If you turn to page 54, you will find Ms. Eaton's data sheet. She possesses a Bachelor of Arts in Science and Early Childhood from Eastern Michigan University, a Master of Art in Teaching from Mary Grove College, and an Educational Specialist in Administration from Central Michigan University. She was a K-5 teacher in Gibraltar School District before becoming an assistant principal, where she has most recently served in Wayne Westland at Adams Upper Elementary School.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Weaver. Support by Mrs. Walker. Is there discussion? Roll call vote?
Myself, yes. Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Mrs. Meddell?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Hines?
Yes.
And Mr., Mr. President Cox?
I'm going to say absolutely again.
All right, seven in favor.
I just simply want to say thank you for this opportunity. I stood here just almost, I don't know, 13 months ago as a new hire to Wayne Westland as Assistant Principal of Adams Upper Elementary. In my long career, last year was by far one of the best, best career, best years I had in my entire career, so I look forward to this year, not only continuing the work that we've done at Adams, but doing great things at Marshall and celebrating Marshall's history as we close things out at the end of the school year. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Eaton. Best of luck. Ms. Eaton, have you brought anybody in your family with you?
My dad, so this is my mother, my mom.
How do you do?
My husband Ken, and then my son Evan, and my daughter Stella.
We're very happy to have your mom in this new role. Very lucky.
Take a good look, because it'll be another year before you see her again.
Thank you all for coming. 359.19 is the Head Start Monthly Report. We've been waiting for this, Mrs. Meddell.
I can, I can tell. The information for the final Head Start Report for the grant year of 2019, 20, 2018, 2019 will be finalized and submitted to the board in, at the August meeting. So there is no need to pass a resolution or anything.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Meddell. Next item on our agenda is 360.19, the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Carnell?
Thank you, President Cox. I just want to let everyone know that the upward-bound students will be taking a field trip during the first part of August. They will visit Niagara Falls, the Royal Ontario Museum, Ontario Science Center, Ripley's Aquarium, the Art Gallery of Ontario, and Casa Loma. The upward-bound receives its funds from federal government, who is paying for this cultural experience, and we're very happy for the students who get to participate in this outing. If the wonderful staff of Wayne Westland would please stand. So I want the, I would like the board to know, and everyone watching, that the wonderful staff is gearing up for the 2019, 2020 school year, where we're going to have open doors and ready for each and every student that comes through those doors. I also want to thank the Maintenance Department for their extra hard work in getting the classrooms, particularly the fifth-grade classrooms at the elementary level. So thanks to the Maintenance Department as well. Also, thanks to Jenny Johnson for leading the effort of the Welcome Back School Rally for the entire district. It would be something different this year, and we're looking forward to that, and that's going to be on August 26. So that's it for now. Thank you all.
Thank you, Dr. Carnell, and congratulations. It sounds like a trip that would be great to be on. Okay, we're stalling as much as we can. The 360.19A has returned to the agenda. Nowhere to be seen.
Mr. President, may I?
Dr. Weaver?
I am not opposed to this. As a matter of fact, I think it's a fantastic idea that we do it in-house. My only concern is, I've been tied up in leases before, and I have, let's just say, I haven't fared too well. It doesn't mean that the district won't fare better, but I just wanted to say that, that I'm not opposed to this in any way. I just would have liked to have seen the costs Siri itemed out for us.
Thank you, Dr. Weaver.
Hello.
Your timing is great, Jenny.
Always, right? Okay. We looked at some numbers. Colin pulled out his, his file, so I think you have the numbers written down. I want to make sure I get them correct. The, you want the cash upfront price?
Yes.
Okay. The cash upfront price is $291,000, $291.06. And then, where was the interest price?
The interest price was, who is this?
Mr. Kling, how would a decision to purchase this outright hit your budgeting?
How is it everybody, budgeting? Well, after a certain amount of years, it makes up for it. So it's an initial investment upfront, but over five years, it would pay for itself. Or not pay for itself, but make up.
Right.
Overall savings.
The reason we recommended the lease-to-buy is because there was no upfront cost, and we thought that that would be a better situation for the district. If you, as the board, obviously decide to go with the upfront costs, we can change the course.
Well, we're interested in knowing what the, what the accumulation of the five-year lease payments would be.
So the accumulation of the five-year lease payments came to 341.20.
It's about $50,000.
That's $50,000. That's, that's real money. So.
Does that all, I'm sorry, Mr. President.
No, you probably already saved us $50,000. Keep talking.
Does, no. Does the 341.20 also include the maintenance package?
No, no.
Okay.
But it wouldn't have been included in the 341 either.
It's not included in the upfront either, right.
So.
Question.
Mr. Neal?
Along the same lines as asked by Dr. Weaver, is there any other additional costs that would be incurred by paying cash as opposed to leasing or otherwise?
No.
Oh, okay.
Other than, I would suppose you'll have to buy a separate maintenance agreement.
No, the maintenance agreement is.
It's going to be the same maintenance agreement either way.
Okay.
Yeah, it would be the same, same contract, same terms. The maintenance works exactly the same regardless if it's a lease or cash purchase.
Okay, thank you.
I can understand why typically you do want, school districts do opt for a lease purchase so that they can, you know, stress the cost or stretch the cost of this out in the service years, but for $51,000? So who made the motion?
The initial was made by Hines and seconded by Neal.
Ms. Hines, will you, your motion include purchasing outright for, will you change your motion to purchase outright for 290, 291.006?
Let me think about it, because I'm still trying to figure it out.
Okay.
I've got a question.
Okay, Mrs. Meddell.
Do we have the money just to buy the machines outright, right now?
I mean, it depends on where you want to put that money. I mean, we are also, we just negotiated new contracts for this next year, so that's going to.
And that's, and that's what I'm thinking, you know. Are, are we going to, we're going to take care of one problem and create two others by doing this? You know, and I realize, you know, it's penny-wise and pound-foolish in the end.
Yeah, you basically get to defer that initial payment over those years instead of upfront in this year, especially over a new contract year. So that's one strategy you can look at.
Well, does that concern you? I mean.
Not for this year, not for this year. I think either way, if you were to add the expense on top of our overall expenditures, we'd still be okay this year.
I think that's part of why we went with the lease option, because it is cash positive, because you guys are currently spending more by outsourcing this print. So by doing the lease, if we are able to do it right away, you guys are saving money every month, starting on month one.
So there's less of a burden upfront in that initial year than if you were to pay cash for it upfront?
Mr. President, I wanted to ask you, Mr. Kling, you said we would be okay this year. So if we purchased the machine outright, why would we be in trouble the next year or the next year?
Well, the further you go, I mean, it's harder to calculate student counts and all that other, it's harder to calculate that out. So I'm saying the next couple of years, we would be okay, but I mean, I, I think it's a small purchase in relation to the budget of our district, so it would be how you want to look at it, if you want to put that initial payment upfront or defer it over the next five years.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson, how critical is it that the board makes the decision today? Can we defer this for a month?
We can defer it for a month. We will not be ordering equipment until the contract is signed, so it's at the board's pleasure.
So I'm working a lot with Devin and Jill, Ms. Simmons and Mr. Kling, because I want to see what the budget looks like in the long term, because you did just negotiate several contracts, and I want to see what the cash flow looks like, what the structural budget looks like, whether or not you're running a structural deficit. And so until we can wrap our hands around that, and I think we can do that in a month, if it's okay with the board, I'd like to bring this back, and if it's okay with Ms. Johnson, I'd like to bring this back next month with all of those questions answered. Does that sound appropriate? I agree.
That sounds fine, there's no rush. When, when you brought the issue up, Ms. Simmons, you mentioned that there was going to be an overall savings to the district doing this as opposed to the way we were doing it that was equal to $100,000 a year?
Yes.
So over the next two years, that's $200,000. That almost pays for the machine, so.
Yes, it does.
You know, the money's going to leave one way or the other.
Right.
But, but because there's no rush, there's no rush. So if anyone wants to, what's the board's pleasure?
I would like to give it some time.
Mr. President, how about we kick this over to Finance Committee to, to take a look at this after Dr. Carnell has had a chance to look at the budgets and then.
Okay, so is there a motion?
My biggest concern is that we've got beginning-of-school printing that needs to be done, and that's, now we're running into more money outsourcing that particular projects for each one of the schools or for the whole district, however we send this information out. So that's also another consideration that we need to think about, too. But I have no problems kicking this over to Finance to study just a little bit more before it comes back to the board for.
Is there a motion to postpone?
I can, I can make a motion to postpone.
Motion by Mrs. Meddell to postpone, is there support?
Support.
Support by Mr. Buckaloo, discussion?
Will we be able to get the information to the Finance meeting by the 12th?
Yes.
Okay.
Further discussion?
One more question. How fast will we get that equipment once we vote on it?
Once the contracts are signed and we turn it over to Rico, it's a one-month process to get the machines, and then it's a three-month process to get them set up, trained, and get the online storefront going.
It kind of makes postponing defeat the purpose.
Yes.
Okay, well, let's vote on the postponement. Is there further discussion?
Or would you rather just have me pull it off?
You can pull it.
I'll pull it off.
I'm not going to vote for it. The maker of the motion was making the motion based upon a lease purchase, and that was supported. Do you want to keep that motion?
Yes, I would do the lease purchase to be safe.
Is there discussion?
I'll just add this, the cost of printing, particularly color printing, gets to be really, really expensive, and this particular program, whether we're leasing or purchasing, has great potential for saving us that exorbitant cost of printing materials. So I'm not, as much as I'd like to save $50,000, that's not, that's neither here nor there when we're talking about the total cost.
Yeah, we might not be saving it at all.
Right.
Right, all right. Further discussion? Roll call vote?
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Mrs. Meddell?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Neal, yes. Mr. President Cox?
Yes.
All in favor?
It got it out of us.
Thank you.
And thank you very much for your extra efforts.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is 361.19, which is Citizens' Comments on Non-Agenda Items. Anyone wishing to address the board? Okay, nobody wants to address the board, all right. We're going to move on then to 362.19, which is Review and Recommendations of the Board of Education. Mrs. Hines?
Yes, I'd like to give a moment of silence. We lost one of our students over the summer in a tragic accident, his mom over at David Hicks, and, you know, we reached out to the family, and, and it's going to be a little bit heartbreaking when the school starts next year, and, you know, so I just, if it's okay, just a moment of silence for that child and his family for the beginning of the new Thank you. So I'm excited about this next new year. We have some wonderful things coming up. The kids are going to be going back to school, all these wonderful programs, we're going to have the football games, all the wonderful back-to-school events. I'm really excited about the back-to-school bash that's coming up, so, and with our community partners, really getting them out, and to definitely working on more partnerships with the mentors with our children, because, you know, I've heard that the culture of the behavior is an issue, so once we kind of get that taken care of with, you know, really mentoring children, showing them there's alternative ways to solving problems will really help the district. So it's going to be a great year, I'm really positive, and welcome back next month.
Thank you, Ms. Hines. Mrs. Meddell? Mrs. Meddell?
Well, first of all, I want to welcome Dr. Carnell to our board meeting as our interim superintendent. This has not been an easy time in our school district, and I'm, I'm grateful that you stepped into the, the spot for the time being, and so we can work out our issues. So, thank you. I look forward to working with you. It's, 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 it's been a while since I had a chance to be in the same room with you, but, you know, it's, moving forward, we'll, we'll do the best we can for our students as we always do. Tony and your team, as always, you've assembled a great team in our Buildings and Grounds Department, and you guys work like a well-oiled machine, and I'm very, very thrilled that you are getting the recognition that you rightly deserve. Lindsay Rousseau, congratulations. Being married to the person who had that job for 14 years, it's not easy, but you don't have to do recess duty. And that was a big plus at that time, too. But, you know, there are times that you do have to put in some late hours, usually during contract negotiations and that, but working with Mrs. Simmons is, is going to be a blessing because she has really outdone herself in that department. So, you've got a good, a good example. But he's always on speed dial if you need any, any questions answered. And congratulations, Erin. And yes, it was only 13 months ago, but that's okay. You know, at least your name isn't here, is moving on to someplace else, so at least you're staying with us and moving with us. So, we, we hope that it's not a big, major challenge, you know, during our closing of school process and moving to middle school, but I think it's probably the best things for our kids. So, congratulations and good luck. As much as we'd like to think that, think that everything closes down, of course not. You just heard that our Maintenance Department and Buildings and Grounds are busy working on our facilities and that, trying to bring them back, because they do take a big beating in Michigan winters. They do take a big beating from all the little bodies that are in the buildings, and they spend a lot of the summer months doing that kind of maintenance and cleaning so that it's ready for the opening day of school. So, those kinds of things go on. We have had summer school programs going on. Our JROTC kids went to Indiana, I understand, for their Leadership Week, where they usually go to Alpena. They went to Indiana this year, so I didn't get a chance to see them. That was a little bit too far for me to go in a day's travel. Marching Band, I know we have a place up north, and every time we drive by Central, we know that school's going to be coming soon, because marching band is out there on their field, athletic fields, practicing. So, I know our kids have been going to marching band camp, it's that time of year, getting ready for competitions, getting ready for parades, getting ready for football games. So, a lot of things are going on in our schools, even though we are on a, on a summer recess. And it's, it's unfortunately fortunate that we did lose a student this year. I, I'm always grateful when we finish a school year with all of our student body intact, but when we lose a student, it hurts my heart. And we do have times where we'll lose a special ed kid who is medically fragile, and some of those can be anticipated, but this was tragic. And we, we will miss his energy at Hicks Elementary School, and I know the staff is, is grieving. So, I don't want to be Debbie Downer here, but it is a sad note for us. So, we've got another couple of weeks before we head back to the classroom, so we need to start mending and healing and getting our school supplies purchased and ready to go for the next school year.
Thank you, Ms. Meddell. Dr. Weaver?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Again, to Dr. Carnell, thank you for coming and bringing stability to our district. I appreciate it very much. To Tony and Gino, and I forgot the other gentleman's name.
Matt.
Matt. I suppose that that crystal trophy will every four months be moved to a different home, or every five months?
Yeah, five.
Okay. Oh, you're right. You're right about that. Maybe you should bury it in the wall of one of our new buildings or something. Yes, a time capsule, I'm not sure, but congratulations on a job well done. Ms. Eaton, I owe an apology to your children. I'm sure you'll see mommy from time to time. And also to Ms. Rousseau, I'm happy for this opportunity, and there's been a lot said in the last couple of months from students, but I think that they now know that this is not a forced issue, that she is of her own free will accepting this position, and so I am thankful for that, and congratulations. That's it. Thank you.
Dr. Weaver? Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes, thank you. Well, pat myself on the back, this is the first week of Board Book. Mr. Walker said I could never learn it. Not only have I learned it, but I didn't even have to ask my grandkids how to do it. So, this is, this is a step forward. Some of us are starting to use the laptops and the computers up here, and we're going to see more and more of that as we move forward. It's kind of a neat thing. Thank you, Dr. Carnell, for, for being here. You have a way, as I said the first time we met, you have a way of cutting to the chase and, and getting us and keeping us on track, and, and that's, that's much needed from time to time. I appreciate that. Mr. Spiezak, your crew, Mr. Montagnier, Mr. Conley, I was going to ask you how many of those you have, but apparently it's five. It's getting to be an old habit, isn't it? This Meridian Award always brings with it a cash, a sum of cash, and, and it always goes to a student scholarship, if I'm not mistaken?
That's correct. We sent it to Career Tech for skill trades, so it falls and made this kind of...
And, and more important than that, it's, it's recognition of the quality of work that our maintenance crew does, maintaining things like transformers and water main brakes and, and things of that sort. If the borders don't work, we can't operate our schools, can we? So, much thanks to you for that. And congratulations to Ms. Rousseau and Ms. Eaton for your new positions. Wish you the best. I, I know you're going to do a fantastic job, and I look forward to seeing the results of all of that. And finally, I just learned today that I've been appointed to the MASB Government Relations Committee. I'm one of 18 people, I'm representing Region Eight, and I begin my one-year term with a meeting next month in Lansing, so I'll be involved in perhaps some work with the legislature in that new capacity. With that...
Thank you, and we're lucky to have you in that position, Mr. Buckaloo. Mrs. Walker?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say congratulations to Mrs. Rousseau. Wayne is losing a special administrator, but the district is gaining a gym, and I'm so happy for you. Congratulations, Ms. Eaton. I know you'll do really well. And welcome, Dr. Carnell. That would be it for me.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. Mr. Neal?
Yes, Tony Spiezak, I heard about you long before I ever got on the board, years before, about the good work that you do and how important you are to the schools. Yeah, no, it was from you, you were telling me that. But we do have a great team, a great reputation. I'm very happy to see you get the award and to hear what you do with the money, too. That's a wonderful thing, keeping it in the school, so, thank you very much. Ms. Rousseau, obviously, I didn't get a chance to hear about you before recently, but I've heard nothing but wonderful things, glowing, glowing comments. I'm so happy to see you move to the position that you've accepted, and thank you very much. Ms. Eaton, likewise, congratulations to you and your family on your position. Look forward to getting to know you. And Dr. Carnell, thank you so much for coming to our district and helping us through these troubled times. Thank you so much. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Neal. Dr. Carnell, I would like to thank you for coming to this district and helping to break the RICO copier stalemate. We were amazingly fortunate. Obviously, you have been dedicated to public education your entire life, and we're so fortunate to have you, and I, I happen to think it wasn't an accident, and we needed you, and here you were, so thank you very much. I hope it's a rewarding experience for you, and we're lucky to have you. And Ms. Rousseau, we're lucky to have you in a very important role on behalf of our school district, because you will be the first person, you know, these, these people who are going to come to us are, and that's exactly the type of attitude I'd want them to see. So, I'm very happy about that. Congratulations, I heard you just knocked them over, so congratulations. And Mrs. Eaton, you've got a remarkable career underway, and we appreciate you bringing your family here this evening. We wish you great success, and we know that we'll be seeing you again, and we wish you, we wish you luck. With that, I will just say thank you, everyone. I, we're going to have a short meeting tonight. I'm going to, all in favor of adjourning? Signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion? Those opposed?
There you go.
Guys, have it.